I'm Sandra Collet and I am going to be your host along with Sylvia Hooper from Forcing Progressive Advocacy. And I also forgot to say that I'm with Child Welfare Organizing Project. So again, welcome to our second town hall meeting on Know Your Rights, Break the Silence of ACS. We have a panel presentation for you here this evening. I'm sure you will be floored by the presentation and information that they will give to you. We are having the town hall meetings throughout the city of New York in order to change the discourse of the child welfare system. It is now time for the community and parents affected and those who are not affected to hear the voice of those who have been struggling through the system and struggling through injustice and struggling through disproportionality where there are predominantly, I would say, the majority of children of color, families of color within the system. And without further ado, I will give it to Sylvia to say a few words and introduce the panel.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Sylvia Hooper. I am the founder and assistant director of FPA Foundation, short for Forcing Progressive Advocacy. I am also a former foster youth, a social worker, an advocate, and a radical activist. Doran Matthews, founder and executive director, myself founded FPA eight years ago in April of 2008 after working in a Harlem foster care agency Children's Village and witnessing the theft of funds among staff, the false allegations made against parents, and inappropriate placement of children in the homes of individuals who were determined to be child predators or whom have had criminal records. We felt it was necessary as social workers to report the agency's wrongdoings to the news, to ACS, and the mayor's office. That we felt was not enough, so hence we formed FPA. The focus of our organization is to give a voice to the voiceless, demand respect for the parents. We advocate for and ensure that children aging out of foster care do not continue to make up the homeless population. youths who have no place to call home, nowhere to lay at night, is a complete disservice and a violation of their inherent human rights. We are notorious, rather infamous, for exposing corruption and injustice as well as protesting against agencies who act, respond, and treat youths and families unjustly. It is a well-known fact that African-American children and Hispanic children are overrepresented in the foster care system. We need mobilization amongst the key stakeholders, the parents, the community leaders, and youths to join our movement. This is your call to action. Take back the power that you have and hold your local, state, and federal representatives accountable for your family's well-being and the restoration of your families. In order to promote change, we need to be vocal, visible, diligent, consistent, and persistent. If you are tired of the broken promises, then you must act. It is merely as simple as that. So what it is that we are asking for? We're asking for oversight, accountability, and transparency. We need ACS and foster care to do a better job of restoring families, of keeping children safe, of preventing risk, of identifying abuse and neglect, and keeping the promise, the promise of providing a better outcome for children and families as a result of their involvement. The purpose of the collaboration between FPA Foundation and Child Welfare Organizing Project, hosting and facilitating town hall meetings, is to organize parents, to organize youths, to gather our community members around the discussion of how child welfare is impacting children and families. The panel discussion is focused around individuals discussing their personal and professional experiences as well as their recommendations for how the system should change. Parents need to know they deserve better and that they deserve to have their families restored. They deserve the opportunity to raise their children. Youth need to know their rights, to feel empowered and to demand more of their foster care agencies as well as the staff, as well as the elected officials. We are here to empower, we are here to inform, we are here to motivate, we are here to organize. Youth, parents, community leaders, now the rest is up to you. The time is now to take action. So now I'm going to introduce the panel. So first, we have Jordan Margolis. He is an organizer and father who helps educators, administrators, and family leaders to build communities for racial and gender equity. Mr. Margolis holds a bachelor's in English from Hunter College and MSW in group work from Harlem, I'm sorry, from Hunter School of Social Work, a license in clinical social work, and advanced certificates in family therapy from Hunter College, and the Ministry and Center for Family. Informed by data on racially disproportionate outcomes in education, housing, child welfare, mental health, juvenile justice, he strives to do this critical work and accountability to and under the leadership of communities most affected by barriers to racial inequity. Next, we have Sharon Garrett from the Citizens Commission on Human Rights. She works with the New York Chapter and has the job of informing our communities of the dangers and evils of psychotrophics, drugging, especially in regards to our youth. She works under the CCHR umbrella. She is also a staff member of the Church of Scientology Harlem New York City Chapter. Through CCHR, she is able to serve our communities and present information that may save the life of a young person. CCHR is an international organization. It is the watchdog for humanity against psychiatric abuse. CCHR was founded by the Church of Scientology. A library of information can be found at the websites, cchr.org and cchr.in. Her focus on the panel is the psychiatric drugging of children in the foster care system. Ms. Tamika Willis is a foster parent and has been for the past three years. She has a son in college and has decided to give back to help children in need. Ms. Willis was born in New York City and lives and resides in Brooklyn. She attended SAT Academy and received her education there. Ms. Willis has taken care of elderly people for the last five years, and she has had a passion for taking care of people. Ms. Willis has been helping foster, helping other foster parents by advocating and providing support to them. And Mr. Lance has worked for MTA for over 20 years and is now retired. He has been very active in his community as a housing tenant president. Mr. Lance has over four or 30 children that he has had in his home and is now a community advocate, helping other foster parents and parents. John Lance is a member of FPA Foundation and will share his experiences in dealing with having false allegations called in on him. And so with no further ado, we'll have Mr. Jordan speak.
Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you, Sandra, and everybody. It's a pleasure to be a part of this panel tonight. I was just having some really good conversations with some of the other parents here tonight, and it's definitely humbling to have one foot in the social services world and another foot in grassroots efforts to end racial disproportionality in child welfare. Just kind of, to speak up? Sorry, thank you. It always just reminds me of how disconnected we can be sometimes from the organizations that purport to serve families and what community is determining to be its own goals and its own needs. And I think one of the missing ingredients is more dialogue between families and children who are affected by child welfare and the service providers who are the gatekeepers within those organizations who play that role of deciding when and how families get services and which services are even considered to be helpful and why. So I think one of the things that I'm grateful to be able to do is to be in a position to be able to listen to parents and then to find an opportunity to talk to ACS and to kind of put the brakes on sometimes the too fast rush to try to fix a situation without really understanding what the family's reality has been, what the family's experience has been, what the family's strengths are, what the family's historical relationship with child welfare and mental health services has been. And in my own position as a white male working in child welfare environment, I'm trying to always be cognizant of what is my ability to, to be a conscious gatekeeper and a liberated gatekeeper as the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond describes it and defines it. As, I'm very well aware of the fact that I don't control ACS, but it would be wrong of me to pretend to not have some kind of power and influence. And so how am I going to use that power and influence each and every day in accountability to you and to you and to your children as well? And at the same time, to try to invite ACS staff and other social service staff to reconnect with the humanity that they do have as well? Because sometimes it's easy to get into like an us and them kind of dichotomy, but there's a lot of ACS staff who themselves are not so far removed from the reality of having their own ACS cases at times. And so the shoe can be on the other foot any day. I mean, I remember when my daughter was born, I was a preventive services worker at that time, and it was very humbling for me because I remember realizing that when I became a father, I was then like twice or a hundred times more likely to be able to then someday have my own, Jesus, heaven forbid, compared to when I wasn't a parent. And I think that brought me a bit more down to earth, maybe a bit more humble. Because, you know, I don't ever want to kind of say, well, that can't be me, or I'm going to walk past you and think like I'm somehow better than that, or, you know, anything can happen to anybody. And so, you know, I remember when we were going to visit my wife's family in Trinidad, my daughter was probably, I don't know, like maybe six months old or something. We were walking through sliding glass door, and her wrist bumped the door, and I thought that she was hurt. And I was a preventive services worker at this time, always thoughts sort of going through my head, like, gosh, that, you know, maybe it's not going to be anything in Trinidad, but when we come back through JFK, and then we have to take her to the pediatrician and all kinds of questions, and then, so like, you know, my mind kind of went from zero to a hundred, and, you know, parents, that's not the kind of like anxiety that is healthy for parents to always have to be living over their head. I'm not suggesting that that was something that was so impactful to me, but, you know, I think that's something that a lot of parents have that hanging over their head all the time, along with so many other kinds of forms of racial stress. So I don't want to pretend that I had a taste of that, but I do want to acknowledge that if our institutions and our systems like education and child welfare and mental health are so antagonizing to community that it makes people not even want to be able to have a conversation with a therapist or with a teacher, with a principal, or with a psychiatrist, or with a child welfare worker, then it gets us farther and further apart. We can't have a kind of dialogue. But I think our social service agencies and our schools and child welfare system can be doing such a better job of being appreciative listeners instead of coming with the approach that says something like, we expect you to comply, and that's how you can be helpful. Like, it's almost kind of like that's the theme in a lot of the different institutions, whether it's education, mental health, or child welfare. And I'm really, really appreciative of the work of Joyce James, who was the leader of child welfare services in the state of Texas for a number of years. Within her leadership, she mandated that all levels of child welfare staff go through the Undoing Racism workshop by the People's Institute. And because of her leadership and having that happen, they were able to bring foster care down for children of all races in safe ways, and they reduced racial disproportionality in Texas. And she says one of the ingredients to having done that was that they changed how they approached community. And it wasn't just, we need your help and your help is to comply with our directive, but it was, we're not perfect, we cannot do this on our own, and we want to partner with you. And for some reason, that has been really hard for, I think, a lot of the systems in this city and in this region to take that kind of approach. And, you know, I'm just hoping that that's something that through this kind of organizing and through finding people within institutions that have gatekeeping power, that we can start to do some of that work. And by gatekeeping, what People's Institute means is the people who are certified, hired, sanctioned, licensed to control the flow of information or resources between institutions and communities that those institutions are positioned into. And a gatekeeper can be somebody who just keeps the status quo going, business as usual, or it could be somebody who looks at, at the end of the day, what do their decisions have impacts on which community? And so who are they going to be accountable to? Who are they going to listen to? And sometimes it's not easy because they also have to maintain relationships so that they don't get in a situation where they're going to lose the opportunity to make some changes from the inside. Like what John and I were talking about earlier is that this battle is so huge and is so ongoing that we have to have people working outside of systems, outside of institutions who are completely autonomous and flexible and creative and not beholden or bound to the frame of mind that the agency might be coming with. But we also need to have people within the agency who are starting to have an anti-racist and historical power analysis, like what People's Institute tries to offer. And not just people who just go to the Undoing Racism once and check off the box to say, I did it, I got my diversity training, or culturally competent, now I can pat myself on the back, but that continue to organize every single day. And I don't claim to have, you know, any answers or all the answers, but there's so much, you know, energy coming together just on a cold night tonight. Everybody in this room tonight, I'm sure, you know, prefers to be home with family, and the fact that people are here means that this is critical, this is urgent, and, you know, I'm here to support this work in whatever way I can. And so I don't want to monopolize the time, but at this point, I'd be happy to turn the mic over to the next presenter.
Thank you, Jordan. So we're going to have question and answers after all the speakers have spoken. So next to speak is our Sharon Garrett from CCHR.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm going to read off some facts, I hope you don't mind. I tried to memorize it, but I couldn't. Maybe next time. As she said, I'm from CCHR and my work is to inform the community about the dangers of psychiatric drugging. Psychiatric drugging happens mostly, and it happens in foster care a lot, and it happens in public school system a lot, and most of the time it happens more towards minority children. So, okay, here's some facts. This summer, The New York Times reported that more than 10,000 American toddlers from ages two to three years old are being medicated for attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, ADHD. Okay, that's toddlers. Toddlers covered by Medicaid are more prone to be put on psychiatric drugs like Ritalin and Adderall. An investigation by a newspaper in California found that one out of every four adolescents in California's foster care system is receiving psychiatric drugs. California has the largest foster care system in the United States. This investigation found that more than half of the children living in California group homes are authorized to receive psychotropic drugs. In the group homes, children are medicated to sleep and to keep them manageable. In these homes, children who refuse medication may be punished and lose privileges such as visiting siblings or going outside. I'm sure similar things like this are happening in New York and all across the U.S. A foster child's path to psych medication can begin if they can't sit still in class. They can receive the ADD or ADHD diagnosis and a prescription. The more painful experiences these children in foster care go through, the more the drugs, the more drugs can be prescribed. Research shows that foster children receive drugs up to 13 times more than children in the general population. This comes from ABC News in 2011, the research stated. Foster children are often even sent to psych wards in hospitals by ACS workers for reasons like breaking curfews, fighting, and other discipline problems. Clinicians in community mental health-based services are supposed to use a variety of therapies to help children. A lot of them rely heavily on psychotropic drugs and much less on talk therapy, nutrition therapy, and play therapy. I've seen this happen to my niece myself, and she this year, where I actually had my daughter record a conversation she had with the psychiatrist. She actually asked the psychiatrist, told the psychiatrist she didn't want drugs, because I had told her about this a few years ago. And the psychiatrist, I could hear, said that drugs work better, talk therapy will take too long, you know? So this is the psychiatrist who, well, to give you some background, my niece goes to a very private small girls' school. She was a A student on the robotics team. I don't know what happened around November. She got acne, I don't know what was going on, but she did not want to be in that school anymore. She told a teacher that she felt ugly or whatever. She got sent to see a social worker or psychologist in the school, hence, you know, it then led on to seeing a psychiatrist. So this can happen to a child in private school. So I can imagine how easily it happens to a child in the foster care system. Okay, psychiatric drugs prescribed by psychiatrists are mind-altering drugs. They can change the way a person thinks or cause them not to think at all. If these drugs can do this to a-
So before you introduce the next panel person, thank you, Sharon, for that. I think what I want to add to that is just from a parent's perspective. What happens is that when a parent's child is removed and taken into foster care, this becomes an issue, right? Because the parent is saying, no, there was nothing wrong with my child when he was home, but now he's in foster care, now all of a sudden you want him on medication. Then if you refuse to sign to have your child on medication, you become the combative parent. Not the parent who's looking out for the best interest of your child, but now you're the combative parent who does not want to have medication given to your child, so you don't want to see them have the best, from their words, the best medical care, the best mental health care. So now you become an obstructor in the plan that they have. But I think what you've done for us and for so many parents is you've solidified for us concretely that, listen, you know, we have a right, we have a right to question what medication, if any medication, should be given to our children based on the statistical data that you've just given and shared with us.
Yes, you definitely have a right. And I'm not saying our psychiatrists are bad. There are some holistic psychiatrists out there that do not, they would not go to prescribing psychotropic drugs first. Yeah, and Rolando, Rolando is also on CCHR staff. He has a personal experience where they did take his son away for a while, and he fought ACS and won.
That was very insightful. So next we have Ms. Willis, Tamika Willis, who is a foster parent and will share her experience interacting with various foster care agencies.
Hello, community. My name is Tamika Willis, and I live in Brooklyn, and I have been a foster parent for four years now. I became a foster parent after my son went off to college, and I wanted, I wanted to give back and help a child in need. My experience with being a foster parent has not been a good experience. The children that was placed in my home was helped due to my diligent effort and lack of support from the foster care agency. ACS claims to be dedicated to ensuring the safety of the city's children and the strength of its families. Its primary mission is to protect children from abuse and neglect. As a foster parent, I have witnessed serious shortcomings with the foster care system, and this has left a good foster parents deeply unsatisfied with their experiences and, in some cases, no longer willing to care for foster children in the future. The contracted foster care agencies is doing more harm than good to New York City families and their children. Don't get me wrong, we need ACS. There are children who are really abused, but there are also a lot of abuses in the system that need to be addressed. Those abuses include undertrained caseworkers, caseworkers lying in court documents, kids being sent to unqualified therapists, and parents who are railroad into relinquishing their parental rights, not to mention the lack of support for the foster parent who received these children. The system has been negative impact on youths in the absences of effective and skilled foster parents. Many foster children and youth feel unloved and consider their foster homes as institution like hotels with rules and regulations. They sometimes arrive at new homes that are unprepared to accommodate them and unaccepting of their lifestyles. I believe that there is a false advertisement being put out there by the New York City Administration for Children's Services, ACS, who claim that they are committed to making a difference for children and foster parents. ACS and the contracted foster care agencies are not working very hard to provide the supportive services to the children or the foster parents who cared for them. I have seen many good foster parents quit because of the lack of support, disrespectfulness from caseworkers, and false allegations that have ruined their lives. When we speak out about not being provided supportive services from the agency, you with them, you are isolated by the foster care agency, and your home may be closed. My question is, who is monitoring the performances of these contracted foster care agencies? If I, as a foster parent, did not take a child to a medical appointment or did not send the child to school, I would have a false allegation called in on me as a foster parent. On the other hand, when the agency failed to provide a mental health service or not enroll the child in school for weeks, who calls the neglect on the foster care agency? Many children fall through the cracks because, or- Many children fall through the cracks because, or failed outcomes of, and lack of support for the foster parents who care for these children. Here are four issues that affect foster parents. One history, as a foster parent, I was not always made aware of the child's mental history, behavioral problems, or history within previous homes. These... Sorry, everyone. This becomes a liability to any foster parent that takes a child in their home. It becomes difficult for me as a foster parent because of not knowing can cause harm, because you do not know the appropriate way to care for that child. Lack of support. Some foster parents feel lack of availability and access to support programs and systems that set up for them and the children. Communications, the breakdown of communication between foster parents and the agencies. Feeling a lack of support and not being prepared for a child who has particularly difficult issues are all the reasons parents have chosen to terminate replacement or leave the foster care system completely. Four false allegations. Foster parents fear losing the children that they care about, having their homes closed, being unable to keep their jobs, and having stigmas attached to them due to allegations of child abuse and neglect. Given the many issues foster parents face, it is necessary to understand the components of the foster parent experiences before judging us. It is an ACS responsibility to ensure an accurate care for the child and to plan for the child's future. We must hold them accountable for the failed outcomes. In 2007, improved outcomes for children, IOC, was put into place. Agencies has failed to deliver, and our children and families continue to suffer. This is the reality about what's happening inside these foster care agencies. Foster parents are afraid to speak out. This is why children and families are not being helped. We, as foster parents, and the parents are left on our own to deal with the obstacles and challenges with no support from the agency. We don't receive the foster parent manual, which is true, because I was one of them. We have no voice, we have no rights, and we are just a number and a bed for contracted foster care agencies. That's why they want to make you bleed. Children are removed when foster parents go above and beyond to help them. The advocates with the agencies are the agency. This is a big conflict of interest. Foster parents and advocates and some foster parents associations are not there to help and support us. The fake advocates don't even know the policy and the procedure, so how are you helping foster parents? I encourage parents, foster parents, and youths. You must learn your state laws, you must find out about policies. Go to the OCFS website, and the policy manual is there. I am not understanding this system and lack of support for the most children. I became a member of FPA Foundation because I needed help and support, because my agency was trying to railroad me because I spoke out. I have been an active FPA Foundation member, and I am now a foster parent advocate to help support foster parents in need. As a community, I am bringing awareness about concerns and issues that are taking place inside these foster care agencies. I am asking parents, foster parents, youths, to come forward and join us. Do not allow any agency to sign with you and violate your rights. The Administration for Children's Services and the contracted foster care agencies need an oversight. FPA Foundation is asking for an investigation and audit to be done on these family cases. African-Americans and Latino children and families live in being destroyed by a system that claims to protect in large numbers. ACS is not to help us. Congress is not going to help us until we, the people, put pressure on them. I always hear that foster parents are in it for the money. You have a good foster parent and you have bad foster parents. What is ACS in it for? They are the ones getting the federal dollars to remove children from the families and adopt them out. And no one ever speaks out about that part. Foster care has become a business of the back as a minority of children. All of these people have jobs, securities, therapists, social workers, caseworkers, foster parents, and the list goes on. Look at the whole system and not just for the foster parents. We must step up and help our community in order to help the changes that we want. As a community, we must come together and work together. Work together allows us to have a louder voice, which demands better responses. FPA Foundation is here for one reason, and that is to help with providing information, providing advocacy, and organizing to help everyone who can. Anyway, we in fighting this foster care system. Thank you for your time.
That was fabulous. Thank you, Ms. Willis. Thank you. And last, we will end with Mr. John Lance, who is also a foster parent who has battled false allegations from his foster care agencies. So, Mr. Lance?
Hello, everybody. I'm John Lance. I'm adopted foster parent. I've had over 37 children in the last 10 years. I was taking families of four and five, keeping families together, taking tough teenagers. Being a team player, working with the agency, working with the birth parents. And you get good children, you get some bad children. You get tough children, you get cooperative children. You get children on medication, you get children that, for some reason, get put on medication. So, I can pretty much relate to what everybody's saying, because been through it, going through it. And I mean, I get a family of four, I get rape cases. Biological father raped a little girl. They clean the house out and bring him to me, and I'm like, wow. You would think that a little girl would not want to be around a man because that dad was the one that actually did it, but they said no. You know, they said no. And those children stayed with me for 18 months. You know, I had Mexican children, all nationalities, you know. It really, it really can get tough sometimes. But my agency loved me, my agency worked with me. I mean, right now, my complaint is not against my agency right now. But since, as time went on, I ended up getting a false allegation from a little boy that I adopted. I adopted a boy, and he come from a tough family, a lot of drug user, a lot of drug user. They're not educated, they don't believe in going to school. They believe it's okay to disrespect adults, disrespect teachers, stand out in the street, smoke marijuana. I mean, so it's that new era that I was there on the way. And I adopted this little boy under the grounds where he still could communicate with his family. He was 13 at the time, 12, 13, and you can't take that. Once they know their family, they know their family. It's not like you're getting them at two, three, four years old. And but so, this kid, he knew his family, and his family was a cripple. His sister was a cripple, she's smoking drugs, boyfriend's a gang member. The aunt, her boyfriend's a gang member, remember? He's smoking drugs. During his life, he was abused, you know? That same aunt beat him in the head, hammers, caught an ACS case, and I end up getting, I get the problems. I get the toughness. So, I'm trying to show not only him, but other children too, that I want to try to help change your lifestyle, I want to try to make things better for you. I want to give you a different life, I want to show you something different. You got to go to school, and you got to be cool, you got to listen. You know, nobody's saying you can't have no friends. But when you're in the classroom with the teacher, you let the teacher talk. Sometime, that's not the time to be talking with your friends while the teacher's talking. You have to do your classwork, you have to do your homework. And that worked for a little, little while. Next thing, it was a big master turnover. It was a big change all of a sudden. On these weekends, he's going to visit the aunt, going to visit his sister, going to show up with his brothers, they're all older. Now, this particular aunt, for the first six months, wasn't even speaking to him, wasn't really... She didn't like him because she was the one that hit him in the head with the hammer. All the kids came back home to her, but she didn't want him. So, he got put up for adoption. I met his father. He wasn't affiliated with the family. There were ups and downs, it goes. So, I communicate with him too. I try to communicate with everybody, keep this fair. You know, but he's with me, he's going to have to listen to me, and we're going to do a lot of different things that you ought to permit him to do and some things, you know, he got to do for me. The next thing, the dad loved it. He loved it that now he gets to see his son. Now, he gets to experience, he gets to spend weekends with his son because Mr. Lance has him. Now, we working with him with the aunt. Don't be mad at your aunt, you got to try to forgive her. You know what I'm saying? Your brothers and sisters are over there, you know, try not to think about it. He goes over to her house for the weekend for this first six months, she make him sleep on the floor. You know? She doesn't feed him like she feed everybody else. He'll come back home and tell me, you know, and I let the caseworkers know. I'm always communicating with the agency, letting them know what's going on so they're all aware. Then, as time goes on, a few weekends went by. The aunt takes him to the store, Walgreens, the drugstore. Look out for your auntie like you used to. Go get me some, go get me some perfume from over there, go get me some of that. I look, you see that makeup that I had? Go get that. He was teaching him to go steal. And then he come back home to me. You know, I said, "How was your weekend? How did you do?" He said, "Everything was fine." You would think everything was okay, because he wasn't telling the truth. Then, one weekend, the store, he gave the wrong number out. He got caught in the store stealing and gave my number instead of the aunt's number because he was over there for the weekend and he called me. Then, he said, "No, no, no, not him." I heard him in the background. I called over there and asked where he was at. The aunt didn't want to give up the information. I said, "What do you mean? You don't know where he's at?" So, me and her, we didn't, we didn't get along. You know, after that, it was, our relationship just deteriorated. You know, so as time went on, he was telling, he wanted to come back home, he wanted to go back with them, but he was already adopted. I mean, he was with him. You couldn't, we couldn't turn, we just, that just can't just get turned around, you know what I'm saying? I took you just to take care of you, to try to help you, give you a different lifestyle and still let you communicate with your family, but it got even tougher. It got even tougher. She started teaching him, telling him how to make false allegations against me, make false allegations against the teachers, false allegations against the schools, false allegations against the principal, false allegations against the psychiatrist in the school because he was in therapy. He was ADHD, he was on medication, but he wasn't taking his medication in school, he was taking it at home. So, we were dealing with a whole bunch of stuff. And next thing, on one particular date, an incident happened, and he pulled a butcher knife out on me. And he told the police that I pulled, that he pulled a butcher knife out on me, but at first, he denied it. Then, he told them that I was a hit, and his aunt told him to say he was hitting me because that's what she did. So, she, I had no experience in it. I never had ACS kids, I never had false allegations. This was my first time feeling it. Feeling, and it really, it hurt me to my heart because, you know, the police came, they took him to the hospital, and they seen he wasn't, he wasn't touched, you know? He made few statements, few statements, he just keep lying, you know? He lied, his aunt told him to keep saying, saying, saying the same thing, and then eventually, he told the truth. Now, the ACS worker, false allegations. She didn't do a good job investigating, trying to figure out what's going on. She said, "Okay, well, Mr. Lance hit him, huh?" Even though there was no evidence of that, a lot of the stories were all complicated. She ran with it. She ran with it and wrote it down. The aunt, the sister, and another little girl, little bad little girl, said the same thing. The ACS worker didn't do no investigation. So, the next thing, here I am, I got ACS kids saying that I abused a child, and it wasn't true. I tried to give him his best, give him the best. But the feeling that a foster parent, somebody that's really, really been giving, really trying to give back, really trying to help, I wasn't really familiar with ACS like I am now. I wasn't really familiar about the insides, even the foster care agencies. I mean, I learned the rough side by catching an ACS case. And my advocate, as far as down my agency, she recommended me to go to FPA Foundation, to Ms. Matthews, to Ms. Hooper. And I've been with them for the last two years, and I've been learning. We still fighting my case, hearing coming up soon, next week. But in the meantime, for the last year, every eight, the agencies in Brooklyn and the Bronx, they know me because I go to hearings now. I know that ACS, I know that, I know that state manual. I know that parenting manual. I'm here, and I will defend the ones that deserve it. Foster parents, birth parents, I go to your court hearings. I go to, I go to 110 Williams Street, 150 West, I go to H's, I go to hearings. And if you're right to be violated, I'm not only going to teach you, I'm coming with you. I'm coming with you. You know, and I was taught by Ms. Matthews and Ms. Hooper how to defend these people, help these foster parents, help these parents. When kids come to foster care, for whatever reason, it's a temporary thing. Reunite the children back to the parents, even if the parent might need some help. If the parent needs some help, give the parents the services that they need, but give them their children, but don't try to take their children. They have 18 months, 18 to 24 months, putting their children up for adoption, taking children from the grandparents, not getting the grandparents company. I mean, you see a whole bunch of this going on, you know? And I just want to let you all know that I'm here for these parents. I'm here for the foster parents, I'm here for the children. We dealing with this distributing medications. You know, as a foster parent, I really don't have no say-so. I can't go against, you know, even a parent can't go against, you know, what they prescribe for the children to take. I had a few chairs with, it's on medication, and when they came to me, they weren't on medication. When they left, they were, and I watched the change, I watched the transition. But that's part of the trials and tribulations I've been going through. And I just let you all know, I'm here. I'm an FPA member, I'm an advocate, foster parents, parents, children, and I'm here to help.
Thank you, Ms. Lance. Thank you for that. So, we have a little extra special surprise, we're going to have a parent join us. Ms. Shakara Bay.
Shakara Bay.
Shakara Bay, sorry. So, you're just going to put you right here so you feel supported. So, this is a birth parent joining us. That's going to give testimony to her experience with the child welfare system. Let's just give her a shout-out. I hope you'll be able to share her story. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Thank you, everybody that's on the panel. I listen to everybody, and really, the issues that everybody is talking about, it's not just a foster care issue, but it's a community issue, it's a social justice issue. Some of my brief history, I was once identified as a foster child. So, I went through that experience as a foster child. I also was a teen mother, I went through that experience. I also, after going through those experiences, had my child removed from me temporarily. So, I went through the birth parent experience with the foster care agency and them not being supportive. I went through it all, you know? And the biggest issue is identity, what I see. There's a lot of people that want to classify our people as either minorities or this or that, and want to put us in a group and a sector and create these different issues for us. Not saying that there are parents who have issues, who need help and assistance, because there are. We're all human beings, and nobody is perfect. However, they make it bigger than what it is, and it's because they want to lace their pockets. And that's not fair, and it's not right. It's almost like another form of bondage. It's mental bondage. It's almost like another form of bondage, it's mental bondage, it's bondage with the medications, it's physical bondage, when they don't, when they separate the child from the mother, they cause a psychological thing, you know, and it's not right. And I'm just gonna be brief, I think that all human beings that are of the character to improve, you know, that they need to, that's also with the character to progress, and as humans, in the spirit of love, that we need to work together, we need to organize. Everybody has something unique to bring to the table, they should bring it to the table, they should work diligently, they should work hard, because it's gonna take a collective workforce to improve the conditions. You know, if they were created overnight, they're not gonna get fixed overnight, but we have to come together in order to fix them, you know. And if we stay in that unity, these things can be changed, you know, going forward. We don't have the ten years, five years from now, still deal with these issues, we could be addressing something else.
Thank you so much for sharing that. So, I would say we have a lot of wealth of information that has been shared here tonight. We have nothing but professionals and experts that have shared their experiences with ACS, with foster care, with the medication, and that experience and the impact that that has on both children and families holistically. And so, at this point, I want to open it up to the audience, if anyone has any questions for any one of the panelists.
I would like to know, can I just capture that article that you read or copied?
Oh, that I will.
Yeah. Because I, I would like to, I would like to share some of that. Because she never.
Sure, I can get you a lot of information or direct you. Can I get your email later?
Well, I actually need it for tomorrow, so I could just have you copy it, have it or copy.
Yes, you can, okay, you can have it.
Okay, absolutely, thank you.
I have a copy of my.
Thank you so much.
Can you identify yourself for us?
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
I have questions for the panel. Everyone, every, I agree with everything has been said, and I know there's thousands of people in New York who have been affected by foster care and by ACS, and some people, some of them have lost their children. But my question is this, I don't see a solution to the problem, at least we think out of the box. Because if we're looking for bad aids to try to minimize the damage, maybe that could be a short-term goal. I think a long-term goal, thinking out of the box, would be to dismantle this, and that's the way I sincerely see. I know that the people of ACS are average, some of them are very good, some of them are bad, but the majority are good people, just doing their job for a survival service. If we could, if ACS did not exist, or anything with any other name in New York City, I am convinced a hundred percent, the children in New York would be better off. And not because the people of ACS is bad, they are just average, but even if everyone working for ACS was an angel, which is not the case, they still will do more damage than we. And let me give you an example. The police department, because lately, they are upset with the mayor, they went on to slow down, and they stopped harassing people. Crimes and deaths went all the way down. For many, statistics of the cemetery, the number of people dying went significantly down. The same with ACS. If ACS were on a permanent strike, the number of the children's well-being will, will go all the way out. That's my position.
So, would anyone like to address this question?
He has a very good point, you know. I mean, it's just a course of nature, that children come through who they come through, you know, and I mean, I agree, you know, I really agree with him. He made a strong point, and hopefully, in the future, that'll be something that happens, you know. Hopefully, the people that are in those positions will be in a better position socially, and they won't be in the business of making a few people rich at the expense of families. So, I agree with him.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shannon Queensway. I'm also a foster parent, and I started in a line of handling my daughter children. And I met Ms. Hooper and Ms. Matthews a few years back, and they came and helped, because I wanted to help a child that was in my home with children, and help her keep her children, because the agency itself wanted to take these kids away from her, and I knew with help, she can follow on progress instead of regress. And, and when we went to court, everything, you know, and, and, you know, I really appreciate everything that y'all said as well, but when, when we went to court, they were there, and just in case, I needed that extra hand, and, you know, and that extra voice, and they spoke in my behalf, I spoke to them. The judge herself knew me, because when I go here, I mean, I, I, I just got a sense of remembering things, especially when, you know, when it comes to these kids. I have mothers with children, I took care of all different nationalities, I deal with every children that I can. I'm a mother myself, of six, a grandmother of nineteen, soon to be twenty-one grandkids of my own. You know, I, I, I had the system come in to try to, I'm on vacation, I had to come home early. I got the right, got the people, you know, to take care of the kids, I have the babysitter, everything is up to par. There, now, they want to try to take my grandkids, because they were in my care, because someone put in an accusation against me, but they found it for us. I wasn't even worrying about none of that at the school, everyone knows me, I'm there, you know, so to stick up for these children and the, and the parents, I'm here, you know, as well, you know. I became a member, and I'm continuing, I've loved it, Ms. Foster, I mean, Ms. Hooper and Ms. Matthews keep me involved, because I had, within the time of then on me, I lost a son to murder in two thousand and ten, my youngest baby, but that didn't stop me from living, that didn't stop me from wanting to help another child, because, you know, I love telling kids what to do, or telling anybody who won't listen. You know, I love people, and I'm a people person, and to get around to speaking on behalf of children, adults, or whoever I can, today I will again, and thank you.
So, the, the, the theme I'm hearing here is there is injustice, right? So, there is injustice, not just on the realm of parents, there is injustice on foster parents, youth. And I think that that's, that's what we're trying to say here, again, over and over and over, is that we may not be able to dismantle the child welfare system today, right? We may not be able to do that, but one thing we do know is that with organizing, with all of us coming together and raising our voices, is that we can transform a system, and we know that we can do that. And I remember saying often, I would say, when that knock comes on that door, it doesn't matter if you're a foster parent, a parent, a kinship parent, it just doesn't matter. If the system is not fair and just, it's not gonna be fair and just to anyone that encounters it. So, I am thankful that everyone is here again tonight, and Sylvia's gonna take it, but I have to just interject that, because I think that's, that's important for us to know. That call to action is, is for all of us.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, I definitely have to agree with you in that, you know, I don't think that dismantling ACS is something that's realistic or possible right now, and I don't know if that's really the answer. So, you know, I've seen it from different realms. I grew up in the system myself, from birth and aged out at eighteen, and know what it is to not have an advocate, know what it is to be homeless and not know where you're gonna sleep, where you're gonna get your next meal, know what it is to have a sibling that went through the atrocities of having to explain, you know, his grief, and, you know, why he was acting out, well, it was certainly due to the fact that we had lost some other. And the answer to that was not to hospitalize him. And then, so from that perspective, moving on to having worked at ACS, as a caseworker on the front lines, I can see where there's a difference and the impact depending on what your approach is. If you go into someone's home respectfully, if you go into someone's home knowing that they're the expert of their family, not really going in with the mindset that you're gonna be chastising people and telling them what they should have been doing, and what they've been doing has been wrong, in terms of raising their family and, you know, disciplining their children, but really going in with the mindset that I'm here to be a resource, I'm here to give you tools and help you to build your skills, to enhance what you're doing, to add to the quality of your parenting that you're doing. And certainly, there are times where it is nothing but necessary but to remove a child, when there are definitely matters where a child has been neglected, where they have been physically abused to the extreme, where it is no longer safe for them to be in that home anymore. But there are a large majority of children that are removed based on false allegations, based on reasons that really ACS cannot really attest to in court. And so, I've seen it with both perspectives, and I think that if we continue to have these dialogues, if we continue to have the community to get involved, we need the community, can't just be people that are directly affected. It can't be just the parents, it can't be just the foster parents, it cannot be just the youth. We need the community leaders, we need the religious leaders, we need our council members, we need people just that are living in their community and that care about what's happening. Inherent human rights is what has been taken away. And so, we go back to the mentality where it's not just my family, my child, and that's all I care about or I'm concerned with, but about really concerning myself, what's happening in my community, what's happening in my building, what's happening to my neighbor next door to me. And all of us becoming community advocates, all of us becoming community organizers, and all of us learning what it really takes to impact this system and to make changes, and we can all do it, it's possible. There are different movements that have happened throughout our history, whether we've been allowed to see it or not. We have heard about it, we have read about it, or we have experienced it directly. So, this too can be the next movement. Child welfare is not going to move, child welfare is not gonna change unless we change it. We can't wait for the savior to come and do all the work. We are the savior, we are the angels, we are the people that are gonna have to take the action and make the movement happen. And if we wait till tomorrow, tomorrow, another child is gonna be dead, tomorrow, another child is gonna be buried, tomorrow, another family is going to be ripped apart. So, when are we gonna really take the steps to move forward to make sure that we're restoring families? So, what the next steps are from this discussion is to contact your local council members, to get involved, to lobby in Albany, to go up to Washington, let them hear your voices, to write their president, to write their mayor, to write the public advocate, to get these individuals involved. We're doing it on a grassroots level, but we really need the community to get involved with either C WAP or FPA, or however you need to get involved, you can do it as an individual, and write letters, and do protests, and be an activist. You don't have to necessarily be a part of an organization, but you do have to do something. Thank you. So, if we don't have any further questions, we thank you for coming out, we thank you for listening to our panel, I just want to give our panel another round of applause. For coming out, these cold, bitter nights, and being a part, and also, please make sure that you fill out the survey so that we can hear what your opinions are about how the town hall meetings are going, what we need to change, what we need to improve upon. So, thank you.